To order on the motion to receive and file the agendas presented to us.
Submit.
Second.
First and second, any changes or additions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll move into old business.
Mr. Wheeler is taking a call from the property owner that still has a lot.
Oh, that, okay. Gotcha. All right.
He's been trying to coordinate yourself with those.
Yeah, I don't want to miss that, that call. That's good. Just talk them on yourselves. I suppose everybody's had an opportunity to go through every.
Page for a page. Page for a painful page.
Yeah. I have. I've made a lot of notes, so. But I do want this to kind of be an open discussion once we get into the budget part, so feel free to ask questions, you know, not just, you know, finance, read numbers, you know, I want discussion, you know, even if it's out there, let's just talk about it, you know, get it in there. But, you know, one thing we do need to remember, we're still, with all the decisions we've got, we're still on a line of credit, you know, and of course, their directive in finance and Mr. Grubbs' goal is to get off that, and so that's, that's a mission, I guess.
That still is our goal currently today, line of credit is 750,000. Yesterday was 2.1 million.
Wow. Wow. Okay.
How much?
2.1.
Yesterday 2.1, today 750.
Is that payroll?
750 is occurring.
It's a sleeping, it's a sleeping line of credit, yes. So, when we deposit money, that goes down.
May was a free payroll month in particular time of payments due on the debt.
We had two payroll, or three payrolls.
May.
Yeah, right, yeah.
We paid the retirement probably a million dollars that we paid out on the 10th.
If you get up soon.
Okay.
We'll give you a couple minutes to go through that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Go ahead and review that.
We killed Sherwood Forest.
I applaud the work from our finance department that they have done, putting this budget proposal together. I know this takes several months for them to do, and it's very thorough.
Good.
And we appreciate the work that you guys have done, so.
They, they do a phenomenal job in putting this stuff together, I mean, just in collection of all this and putting it where we can read it, makes sense. As soon as Mr. Wheeler gets him a drink.
We're good.
We're on item A.
We're on.
Get a drink. Get a drink. That, that was a call that we've been waiting on.
Needed to have.
Well, it was a, hopefully I might ask you guys to go into executive session at the end of this.
Okay.
All business, item A, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract Between the City of Ashland and Morton Salt, Inc. For the Purchase of Up to 1,000 Tons of Treated Rock Salt at $99 per Ton for the Department of Public Services, Division of Streets."
Submit. Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item B.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement Between the City of Ashland and Crescent Moon Properties, LLC and Local Pioneers, LLC, Sawstone Brewing Regarding an Encroachment for an Outdoor Dining at 22415th Street from the City's Driveaway."
Submit. Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item C.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract Between the City of Ashland and the Ashland Boyd County Health Department to Provide an Administrative Hepatitis B Vaccine to Approximately Five New Employees at a Cost of $249 per Employee for the Department of Human Resources."
Motion? Second. First and the second, any discussion?
I recuse myself.
Any, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item D.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Approving Change Order Number Two Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Natara Corporation for the Dawson Pool Lining Project, Decreasing the Contract in the Amount of $2,696 and Increasing the Length of the Contract 568 Days for the Department of Public Services, Division of Parks and Recreation."
Submit. Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item E.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Submit the FY 2025 Grant Application to the Federal Transit Administration on behalf of the Ashland Bus System for the Operating Costs, Preventative Maintenance, Paratransit Service, Maintenance Payroll and Capital Expenditures, and Further Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute any and all documents necessary in implementation of this grant."
Submit. Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item F.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Ashland Firefighters, Ashland City Firefighters, Local 706 International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO-CLC."
Submit. Second. First and the second, again, well done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item G.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement Between the City of Ashland and L.E. Gregg Associates for Material Testing and Special Inspections for the Roberts Drive Pump Station Screen Replacement Project in an Amount Not to Exceed $17,992.06 for the Department of Engineering."
Submit. Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item H.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Peoples Insurance Agency, LLC to Provide Property and Casualty Insurance Broker/Agent Replace, Broker/Agent Replacement Services from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026 in the Amount of $14,000 in Authorizing Payment 額."
First and the second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item I.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Approving a Renewal with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield Insurance Company for Administrative Fees to Administer the City's Health Insurance Coverage, Vision Insurance and Stop Loss Coverage for a Plan Year July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026."
Submit. Second. Any discussion? I know I'm signing those papers, there must be 20 signatures for the document. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item J.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Approving a Renewal with Delta Dental of Kentucky for Administration of the City's Delta Dental PPO Plus Premier Plan."
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Trust Participation Agreement for the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services General Insurance Trust for FY 2025-2026 in Payment of Property and Casualty Premiums in the Amount of $850,195.44."
Submit. Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item L.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Adopting the amended Job Description for the Positions of Mass Transit Superintendent, Senior Financial Analyst, Customer Service Representative Supervisor, Customer Service Representative, Occupational Net Profits Tax Clerk, Billing Clerk 1 and Billing Clerk 2, all in the Department of Finance, adopting the amended Job Description for the Position of Chief of Police in the Department of Police, adopting the amended Job Descriptions for the Positions of Custodian, Executive Assistant, Assistant City Clerk and Secretary 2 in the Department of General Guard, adopting the revised Job Description for the Position of Wastewater Collection Field Supervisor/Safety Coordinator, and amending the authorized position listing of the Classification and Compensation Plan as adopted by Ordinance Number 31 Series of 2023 as previously amended, and Ordinance Number 82 Series of 2023 as previously amended."
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item M.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Amending Part 5 Compensation Plan G: Implications of Personnel Actions and Part 6 Benefits C: Vacation Leave and D: Sick Leave of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as Adopted by Ordinance Number 51 Series of 2017 as Previously amended."
Is that second?
Second.
Is that it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Let this decide and break out your books and. All right. Started and then we'll go from there. Well, you want to, you know, I think you should start off with some of the positive things that we've been able to accomplish in the first five and a half months. Is that okay with you guys?
Yes.
That's perfect. That's what we plan on doing. I'd just like to say a few things. As I sit here in a new role.
Sorry about that.
Go ahead.
Maybe that's where you want to be.
Might be.
As I sit here in a new role, I couldn't help but reflect back on, I think my first budget that I helped do in 1989, or 37 years ago, that budget citywide for the entire city was 24.5 million.
Wow.
Today, as we sit here, we're presenting an FY 26 budget of 117 million. If you want to get geeked out on CPI, constant dollars inflation, it equates to 63.1 million. I know some of it's probably these late twenties and Susan, myself, early twenties and Todd, it seems like a long time ago, but anyways, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present the FY 26 budget. Finance and city staff has worked long hours over the last several months to ensure that this document reflects our commitment and fiscal responsibility, operational efficiency, while trying to build fund reserves in our primary funds. Finance recognizes that every dollar trusted to us comes from the hard work of our citizens. That's why this budget is guided by sound financial principles focused on core municipal services. This is just not a financial plan, it's a reflection of our values, our goals, and our shared vision of the future as it balances today's needs with the challenges of tomorrow. With that said, I'll turn it over to the Department of Finance to present the budget.
To expand on Mr. Grubbs' statements there, fiscal responsibility, you all, you know, as you took office, guided us right out of the gate. We started financial responsibility day one. We looked at trying to provide the best services for our citizens, how to do it more economically, but we were also challenged how to do it better. And city staff has worked cohesively together to accomplish those goals, and I'm very proud of everybody because we've, we've looked and we've thought outside the box, and we've looked how we can provide better services to our citizens and do it at a more economical cost. Personnel was the first thing that we focused on, and we cut one and a half million in personnel costs without any reduction in city services. Other city staff teamed together to ensure that work was completed. We currently have four less department directors. Several members of city management team has expanded their span of responsibility. This budget continues the reduction in personnel costs. The ABC administrative position has been eliminated and responsibility for administrative oversight has been given to the chief of police, and finance customer service will administer the regulatory fee returns. Finance also has a reduction in personnel costs. We eliminated a supervisory position and took those duties and expanded it through many staff members. All staff members are doing more than they were tasked with previously, and they're, they're doing it well. We also, Mr. Grubbs, had us create some small teams to have different people from different departments to look at different areas where we could do things economically. And one of the first things we did was we created a small IT team. The small IT team so far has brought us probably $500,000 of savings. And the best part is the part that we're most proud of. You know, most people, when you cut, you think, you think the city's doing us the last. No, we're doing better and we're doing more. We have took the technology in some of our outside buildings and we've increased it. We, they have new video cameras, they have new lock systems, and the IT security is more secure than it's ever been. And we've done that with the talent of our own city staff. That's the, the people that we have on staff accomplished this for us. We've saved 500,000, we've made it better, we've, they've negotiated new telephone contracts, we're looking at changing our phone system, and it's anywhere from, you know, people in the police department to people in finance, Susan is a big part of the telephone. We, we've looked at the elimination of cell phone allowances, we were going to city cell phones, we got negotiated free cell phones, $30 a month plans, which is going to be a savings, a loan of 60,000 there. So, we're looking at everything with a clean picture to try to make it better. We also, with the help of Commissioner Renfro and partner with the county and the jail team, we've, we've done $200,000 of the savings at the cemetery. We were $300,000 in the hole, we're like at 30 some thousand in the hole now. We've improved that so much better, it looks nice out there, but it was thinking outside the box and asking other people to help us, the county joined in and did so. The parking garage, we're, we're working the parking garage with one maintenance worker now instead of two, it's a $67,000 savings. We, Justin Royce, who's something you just approved in this last agenda, he's going to be our safety coordinator. Andrew worked with him and he's going to be the safety person, he has actually a degree in it, he works out in sewer, and he's going to be the safety coordinator. We did some remodeling in the building and we're trying to spruce up everything. One of our goals that we've been challenged with by the city manager is to clean up the city, and we've started a lot of that with our own building here, and we've done it with city staff. They remodeled this third floor bathroom and it looks amazing.
Beautifully done.
So, we have a very talented staff that has been able to help us meet some of these goals. We also started a small water loss team. We, you all have approved the expenditures for us to do new water meters. We're going to start with our highest users, and we're going to make sure that we're, you know, our customers being billed for every amount of water, and we're going to find the loss where we can hopefully keep from raising the cost. We're, we're going to look at saving money in production or in billing, and I'm sure it's a, it's both, and looking for some of our, you know, water leaks and get those fixed.
When would we have a report on those new?
It'll, it'll probably take them 30 to 60 days to get them installed. There's, we had four on hand, so the first one we did is Pride Hill, we worked at King's Daughters, I think that they did Marathon. So, we'll know those probably within 60 days, what kind of, on those, but the other ones, I don't even think we have it stocked yet, I think we just placed the order. We also, our two areas that we chose to start with is Catlicksburg and East Park because we can actually cordon those off, and we know what our production are in those areas. And we not only are looking at the water loss and in replacing lines in Catlicksburg, we're also fixing a problem that we've had for many years. We, when the fire hydrants went out of service, we didn't get new fire hydrants in because the water lines weren't big enough. So, we're tackling two things at once there with the, we're replacing the water lines, we're going to put new meters into all the customers on those water lines, and we're also going to be able to do some more fire protection that we have an agreement through today, so.
And I would anticipate some early material savings from that. I mean, currently, our water loss bounces around versus production versus what we bill is right around fifty percent. So, if we can drill that down, fix some of these issues, I think there's material savings. And hopefully that leads to we don't have to raise, you know...
Right, yeah.
And kudos to our engineering team. They are actually engineering it in-house. It's about a fifty thousand dollar savings of what it would have cost if we would have hired an outside engineer. So, that's a highlight to some of the things that we've accomplished in five months.
And first of all, let me compliment you guys. You know, we have given you direction and you all jumped on it and all of us applaud you for that. But with that said, I'm going to challenge you to do more. I mean, we've got to be able to get really good handle on it. I think we've got a good handle on it now, but I think I'm going to challenge to do more. I mean, we should always and every department should look for savings. How can we do it better, more efficiently, and still provide better, you know, or maintain that level of service?
And kind of look at the, you know, two and a half million dollar savings, you know...
I know.
Sitting in the... On the way to the elevator up here today, I put my iPhone just to average of the citizens. That's a hundred and twenty-five dollars that we've saved for every citizen in Ashland in five months.
Oh, wow. That's nice.
And certainly just not finance, the people sitting up here.
No.
The people sitting behind me and to my side, I mean, everybody's chipped in.
Well, it takes effort, you know, to be able to do that, but...
We all have a lot of talents and we all have worked cohesively together to achieve this.
Well, I applaud the fact that you didn't lay anybody off because I was definitely against that. I mean, we did need to make cuts. I mean, I'm talking about here in the last just a few weeks, the ABC and all that, but that was my concern. That worried me. I didn't want to see that and I'm glad you all did that.
Well, you remember those discussions we had. That was... You're right.
So, with that all said, if anybody doesn't have any questions, I'm going to start with some citywide budget numbers in your red book.
I should do it.
I'm sure you all know this, but the red book is a summary and if you all need any detail to support these numbers, the detail is in the white book.
This is kind of like your Cliff Notes version, the big book and the big report. As Tony mentioned earlier, our proposed citywide budget is one hundred and seventeen million, two twenty-one, one seventy-four. This does include a two point nine percent increase proposal in January only for off the line of credit. Investment in our human capital is thirty-five point eight million.
Yeah, I think that getting us off of the line of credit should be the trigger to be able to...
Yes.
Yes.
That is our goal.
What do you attribute the reduction in the overall budget to? Looks like you've... It's a four point six percent reduction from last year's budget.
Part of it was probably the capital purchase improvement fund where we had the downtown budgeted. Part of it has been the reductions in cost, the capital and the reductions in cost.
Yeah, in the prior year budget, we were holding construction and stuff in that fund and since it's been spin down.
If you take out... You know, you mentioned the size of the budget now versus what it was in eighty-nine when you came. If you take out the grants, I mean, what is our routine utility budget, general fund budget together?
Well, I think if you look at it in terms of inflation or what we call constant dollars, if you converted that baseline budget in eighty-nine, that's about sixty-three million.
Today?
Today's dollars.
What was it in eighty-nine?
Twenty-four. And that's citywide. So, I mean, we have... We've gotten a lot of grants.
These grants inflate the number...
Yes.
Obviously substantially when you've got eight million dollars or ten million dollars in ARPA funds flowing through the budget.
And as we gear up for this water treatment plant and stuff, a lot of the capital projects went on the last few years.
And we have half the conference center budgeted and this budget also.
You've got twenty-five million on the wastewater treatment plan in the budget, correct?
Yes. Twenty-five million on it, eleven million, ten point nine million on ARPA and the convention center, we have twelve point seven million.
What's the balance of the CSO now?
We're probably at sixteen million. We'll be able to replenish that a little. We anticipated...
We've used some of that for construction in the wastewater...
We have for engineering, but we have changed when we got the federal appropriation of four million, we've made that engineering because making it engineering was a cost savings to us because if we would have made it just to construction, we would have had to pay American Steel prevailing wage and all the stuff. But doing engineering, when that is finished, and I think they're... Mark said they're close to getting it finished, they'll go back and reimburse our CSO fund for everything we paid for engineering until the beginning, up to the four million.
I've got some comments on the front page, but I'm going to hold them until we get completed.
Okay. Kentucky Retirement, we have the benefits. The Kentucky Retirement is on the downward trend. It went from four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar savings. Police health costs, we've maintained the nineteen-five transfer per employee. Our debt is twenty-seven point two million citywide, but that does not include any debt for the CSO. Even though we've signed a loan agreement for KIA, that forty-four million will not be in there until completion of the project. We have three...
So, that will be in next year or...
KIA does not make you pay back until the project's complete, so four years, forty-one months.
Oh, okay. All right.
As Sadi mentioned earlier, with capital investments and projects, this is a very capital intensive budget at fifty-three point two million. We have been fortunate enough, we have federal and state grant funding of twenty-one point eight million and these are... Some of these are consistent where we are an entitlement community, we get them every year, CBG bus system and municipal road funds and the Section Eight voucher. It's pretty consistent. But we also have the fire department supplied for grants in there and the conference center and the Brownfield grant. And we have an AMLA grant, half of it left for the convention conference center.
Michelle, I think you ought to touch on the cost of the health care overall and to the per employee.
Overall, we've actually projected at five point seven million citywide. We've been fortunate with our health care. We've outpaced... Tony tracked this for probably since we've become self-insured. We've always been...
About twenty-seven years.
We've always been lower than medical inflation, so...
That's great.
We've actually kept our plans good for employees, but we've done it at a way where we kept costs as low as possible.
And that is nineteen thousand five hundred per employee, correct?
Is there... Is there going to be an increase on that or is it the same as it was?
It's the same as it was. Every decision that we make, we try to do it where we are actually lowering our costs and our... My words here with the...
The actual aggregate cost is pretty flat for the last several years, although we are this year that we're in, we are seeing a slight uptick.
Uptick.
Uptick and...
And claims?
Not so much medical claims, but in actually RX. There's a fair amount of people going with the new weight loss drug, which we hope...
Is it covered by our plan?
Yes.
Yes, it is. It is. So, we're hoping in the near future that a lot of times that will pay less.
You know, we used to have an insurance committee and we don't have that anymore. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't know.
We did and we have not utilized that committee in...
Six years?
Six years, something like that.
I thought it was a pretty effective tool in keeping costs down.
Would you review the different cases?
We reviewed cases that were problematic. We took proactive actions when the costs were running high. I think it's something that we ought to consider reiterating.
Samantha's done a great job with the people that has issues, trying to help them solve them and we...
It's not a reflection on anybody that's doing the work.
And we've looked at something that we really achieved and especially Andrew with the fire contract, we risk mitigation.
It's a big deal.
It is.
We got to keep it now in one plan now that we've got them in the plan.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm going to let Robin unpack the more detail of the general fund to you all.
The general fund is the primary governmental operating fund of the city. It is used to account for all financial resources except for the...
Where are you, Robin?
Page four.
To be accounted for in other shots. Revenues and expenditures for the general fund are budgeted at thirty-three million dollars. Page five. The projected fund balance for this year twenty-six for the general fund is eight point seven million. That may look good, but it's not because currently the city has no liquidity where the general fund is basically paying for a lot of the other funds. Currently, the general fund's debt is nine point six million with annual debt payments of one point seven million. Salary benefits are budgeted at two point four million. Capital outlay at one point two million and these projects will be listed in the capital purchase improvement fund. General Fund Kentucky Retirement is budgeted at four point two million.
Can I make a comment on that? Is Kentucky Retirement, is that going down?
It is going down.
The rates gone down?
Yes.
The rates have gone down the last couple of years, actually.
Yeah, from last year, hazardous went down two point eight eight percent and not hazardous went down one point zero nine percent.
That's super. If we could back up a page, I think it's worth noting in the revenue sources that our largest revenue source is our license fees. Used to be our real estate tax and the balances have changed over the years. We're now generating the money out of occupational and...
Occupational license fees.
In the absence of occupational tax, we'd be in serious trouble.
It makes up fifty-three point three percent of our budget.
Payroll tax, occupational tax.
Well, she goes on.
You're doing it again.
Fifty-three percent of the budget comes out of that.
I do want to say before we go on, another cost savings that we have done and that is a directive for Mr. Grub is we're only doing travel training if it's required right now until we get off the line of credit, even though it may be budgeted. His directive is we're only doing travel training if it's required for a certification or a special grant or something that we're learning.
Are we doing the same thing on hiring? We earlier discussed not doing any hiring without...
Yes, only in essential cases.
But I need a note in there. So, you say we're not sending them even though it's in the budget because I made a couple of notes on there of the department going...
We would have had them budgeted it with the caveat that hopefully we will be off the line of credit.
Gotcha.
And a little bit better.
Okay.
Some of the training's required for licenses and, you know, police training and all of that. I mean, we can't get around that.
I don't have a problem with training. It's conferences that we're on the line of credit. I mean...
None of that's been approved.
We're not doing that. We're not doing that.
Yeah, okay.
We, you know, there was a time that we restricted conferences to in-state conferences. You know, it comes to mind that people are taking trips to California and Vegas and on the city tax dollar and I...
I'm not opposed to that.
You know, I find it extravagant to take these out-of-state trips, in my opinion.
Especially when you're on the line of credit.
Yeah, for sure.
If we were swimming in money, you know...
Well, that's the beginning. That's our trigger. I mean, we got to get off this.
Yeah, that was one note I did not hit on my thing was the travel training. I wanted to make sure we made that clear.
I will. No care, Sadi.
At least we look closely at out-of-state training, more closely.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll continue on page six. We transfer to other funds. The general fund is transferring two point eight million to the recreation, bus, and capital purchase improvement funds. Dues and fees are budgeted at two hundred and seventeen thousand. This money is used to fund other agencies such as Ashland Emotion for thirty-five thousand, Office of Emergency Management for one hundred and seventeen thousand, the Human Rights Commission for seventy-five hundred. Paving citywide in this budget is one point five million. Eight hundred and fifty-two thousand is being paid from the general fund while the balances in the MAP fund is paying. And this budget has two hundred thousand dollars for demolitions.
Is the demolitions, is that just within the general fund or we have money in other funds?
I don't think they could add it into CBG this year. And also, the city decided to add back the position of facilities manager. The individual who had that retired in January of twenty-two, but we figured that the cost of his salary and benefits outweigh the cost of paying for plumbers and every time something breaks down, somebody would have to come in to fix all that. Bring somebody in-house that could go to all the facilities and keep the stuff up. It would be better.
Well, the former...
Good idea.
The former facilities manager did all the carpentry in this room.
He did. He didn't lack...
He was quite a finished carpenter.
Yes, he was.
He visited us earlier this month asking if he...
Oh, really?
He wanted to do some work.
Bring him back.
He's quite a talented man.
Yes, he is.
Return to page seven. This is the tax increment finance fund. This fund accounts for redevelopment and improvement projects in downtown Tiff Business District. This year, the revenue is budgeted at one hundred and ninety-eight thousand while expenditures are two hundred and ninety-eight thousand and the main expenditure is the debt service payment, which is two ninety-eight, three seventy-five. So, that fund will have a deficit of a hundred thousand dollars this year.
And as you see, it is the general fund one point three million that this is one of the problems with our liquidity in the general fund. This is general fund has had to pay the debt service over there.
Right, yeah.
If you turn to page eight. This is the state tax increment fund. This fund accounts for annual increment of the Ashland Plaza redevelopment, Tiff project, sales, use, and property tax that feed from the state. We are budgeting revenues and expenditures this year of one hundred and ninety-five thousand. Turn to page nine. This is the Brownfield Grant Fund. It's a grant to assess safety cleanup and sustainably reused contaminated projects or properties, sorry. Revenues and expenditures are budgeted at one hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars this year.
I know I've asked this before, but I'll ask it again. The one piece of property that's been studied through phase one and I think, you know, it's becoming more and more and more of an eyesore in our central downtown business district. I'm not saying it because it's next to our property, but I drive by it probably three or four times a day. The windows are now broken out and, you know, it would be nice if we had some idea when we were going to address leveling that property. I know there's asbestos concern, maybe...
I think there's tiles and paint and lead-based paint in there. I talked to...
And there...
About it earlier.
There was leaking gas, you know, too, I think.
I think Mr. Paul...
I think there was a phase two.
On this possibly.
And I talked to the owner just the other day.
The primary owner had worked with us, so Rachel, you can come up with...
The primary owner had worked with us, Rachel, when you came up with the plan to redevelop the property. Everything was moving along just fine. She's had some personal issues that we probably shouldn't talk about in open.
A realtor bought that, I mean, it's not the original owner.
Correct.
It's now a realtor.
He'd be perfectly happy to talk about it private, I just, her issues are pretty personal right now. It involves a family in this.
Still like to have some target date of some sort.
Well, the plan was never to demolish.
But the phase two has already been done, right?
Phase two has been done. The report, I believe it's already been submitted. What they were going to do is come up with a property maintenance plan going forward on it. They were also able to remove the lifts, which were inside the garage, which are a big expense when it comes to redevelopment of a property. That was an eligible activity under phase two, to remove those, to see what was underneath. So it's kind of stalled right now.
Well, you know, we got a number of those. I mean, look at the old Park Place over there, too.
Well, and you got the property on Thirteenth and Oak View is another, is another piece. So there's several around town that need some serious attention.
We need to put some thought behind those, too.
Pardon me?
I said I'm making a note.
Good deal. Thank you, Mr. Grubb. I'm sorry, Robin.
We'll continue on page ten with the municipal aid road fund. This fund, there's an excise tax on motor fuels collected by the state and allocated to cities based on population and miles of paved cities, or miles paved streets. This special revenue fund can only be used for street paving and sidewalks. Revenues and expenditures are budgeted at six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. This fund has a positive fund balance of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. This year, we're going to put that extra money towards the paving.
How does the, how does that compare, Mr. Grubb, with previous years, the four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars?
The four ninety-nine is consistent with probably the last fifteen years.
Based on population?
Yeah, we have no control on the...
No, I know we don't. It's a state, it's a first...
Page eleven, the community development block grant fund. This accounts for community development block grants, which is received each year from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Grant money can only be used towards approved projects. They principally benefit persons of low and moderate income.
Let me go back to the gas tax just a second. Is, am I correct in thinking and hearing that the state is going to lower the gasoline tax, a penny or two pennies?
I've never heard that.
I'd be amazed if they don't.
I just wonder, if, in fact, they do, will that affect what we give?
It would, but it would be adjusted accordingly. We would either do less paving or take the additional paving out of the general fund. CDBG, revenue and expenditures are budgeted at one point two million dollars. And if you turn to page twelve, there's a list of the projects in the action plan. Some of those are homeowner rehab, which repairs are done for the low to moderate income individuals and elderly, with, at a two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. A new roof on Hope Place for fifty-five thousand. And a rehab project for the Salvation Army, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. The general rule on this fund is we're allowed to carry over one and a half times our annual allotment, but we're currently at two and a half times. So we need to, this fiscal year, execute a lot of this spending down.
We've got a, somebody in the audience that has written a letter that has asked us to adjust her deal. We might want to give her the opportunity to be heard. All right.
Oh, yeah. In hand.
You got it.
Please, you, go ahead.
So, I'm Cheryl Spriggs, I'm director to senior senior center, and I'm here to advocate for the senior center. As most of you know, the senior center is for people sixty, fifty-five years and older, who come there for camaraderie, for social interaction, and good home food meals. We've really changed things around there. Many of these people, it's the only really healthy hot meal they have. And the ones we've discovered, we send home meals with them, so they'll have a dinner as well. And much of our food is given to us by Facing Hunger, and it tends to be kind of the same thing. We get food from...
Does FiveCo supply any food for the senior center?
Not, none at all. They're a different entity, and we have our own cook. So we get food from the neighborhood up here as well. I forget the name of it, but anyway, they send us pounds and pounds of bakery goods, which is cakes and things like that, so it's not much we can use. So we tend to supplement a little bit with fresh vegetables, so they'll have vegetables with the meals. We ask the seniors to, for a donation of two dollars. Many of them can't even afford that. So at the end of the week, we may have a hundred and ten dollars donations. We grew, from February when I first started, we were serving three hundred and one meals. Now we're at five hundred in May. And so we're growing. CDGB, we get fourteen, we depend on donations and CDGB funds. And that does not cover salaries. Okay, so we, I have to raise money otherwise to get, to get that back. But CDGB gave us last year fourteen thousand dollars, or fifteen thousand dollars. We ran out of money in March. And we will not be eligible to get any funds until August, because we can only start with July. So we're left with four months here of no funding, and it's really tough. So cutting us a thousand dollars is catastrophic for us. That's not a whole lot of money, but for the senior center, it is. So I'm asking your consideration in looking at upping the amount that we get to twenty thousand dollars. It would make a big difference. We've watched our money, everything's accounted for, and I'd be happy to supply any financial supplies.
Who is your major donors? You said you had other donations?
Well, United Way will give us money, but we don't have any of that yet. Okay, so we're in rock and a hard spot. But the thing is, people will give us tangible things, but they don't want to donate money for operating costs. We have some of that. There will be a fundraiser in July. Our No Such has a virtual grant, and we have a little fundraiser with that, so. But I'm asking for your consideration when you do the budget, it would just really make a difference for the senior center.
You know, I support that request wholeheartedly. I've been a volunteer down there off and on for ten years, starting when I first became an employee here. It's very heartwarming when you can go down and volunteer with the seniors to play some games. You know, they play cornhole, they play a bingo, they play a golf ball game, which I get beat every time I go down and play with them. But as former Commissioner Spriggs has said, the meals that some of these seniors receive, three days a week, are some of the only meals they receive all week. And in the partnership with the Facing Hunger Food Bank, to even receive meals, several boxes for seniors to take home, has been a blessing, from what I have seen.
We increased that to seven, we did three when I got there. There are some people there that get a thousand dollars a month, and they're happy.
Even if we can't do this with CDBG funds, I would like to see us try to find a way to maybe up some funding for them, whether it be with some of our ARPA interest money, or, you know, maybe moving around a project or two. But, you know, this is, this is near and dear to my heart, as I know everybody on this board has been there time and time again, volunteering.
Well, I support the request. We just gotta find how to do it.
We can... If I could, Rob, this is, the funds that they go to the senior center are part of our fifteen, fifteen percent public services cap. So if that's what we decide to do, we'll have to probably look at the entire...
Yeah, obviously, you're dealing with a set amount of money.
Money.
You take money away, it's going to come from somebody else. I understand.
Are you under the umbrella of United Way?
We are.
Okay.
Can you, how much funding do you get from United Way?
Well, I have...
You don't know yet?
I don't know, you see, I'm just five, four and a half months in the job. I don't know yet what that will be, but that's coming when, in July. I mean, yeah, so just having fifteen thousand is going to get us through the year. I'm telling you, we're very few, but...
Because that will really help, because my organization is also contemplating that, and that covers our expenses.
Well, but what we're talking about, we do that is to help pay for personnel. We have three people.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
Who run the thing. We have started, I've started turning the air conditioning off, turning the...
Well, hell, you'll kill them. Don't turn the air conditioning off.
No, well, we're not there. I mean, everything, the electric bill of the utilities have gone through roof, as everybody knows. And trying to watch this budget, but you know, just cut down the heat, put on water heaters, keep lights out as much as possible, and then trying to save money anywhere I can.
If someone can make the money from the dollars, well, I can find them.
I, you know, we'll look and find some more money. We can't commit to the amount, but we're gonna, we're gonna work on it. Probably can't come out of CDBG, because it's, you know...
Yeah, increase the draw, the public service cap is capped.
Right, right.
We all support you.
Thank you.
Just fight it up.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Support your...
You know, these seniors who worked hard all their lives, served their country. These seniors have worked hard all their lives.
Sure.
And served their country, raised families, and, you know, we're like, trying to do this.
Some interesting folks.
You know...
Yes, they are.
Something else, there's something else that I would like to discuss on this, is I know that the past previous year, the fire department has, has done fire prevention. And I know that they were seeking CDBG funds as well. I think that we need to fund that request also. And I'd like to make a motion, if we could, to up the fourteen thousand, a difference up to twenty thousand for the senior center, and fifteen thousand for the fire department.
Well, there weren't a problem with the, getting the smoke detectors?
No, this, their fire prevention goes out in the neighborhoods, in schools.
Right, okay. But I think we had a problem, somebody that was purchasing them or something like that, if I'm remembering.
If you all, if you all would like, we could, I think her request, she's out of money now. To, you could take the six thousand and the fifteen thousand to the fire department, make a motion, as Tony said, to pay it out of ARPA interest, when you go back to voting, if you'd like.
I second that.
And not do it out of next year's budget.
I was going to say, give them some opportunity to look to see where the money is.
Yeah.
I think we could do it now, probably using the cleaners, if that's okay, what you want.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I second.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, just to be clear, are we talking twenty K for the senior and...
And six for the firefighters, is that what they said?
Yes.
I think you said fifteen for the firefighters.
Fifteen?
Fifteen for fire prevention.
And six for the senior center, but it does not come out of CDBG, it comes out of ARPA, and we're going to do it this...
And we go ahead and give her that six thousand.
Yes.
And you know, and what really rings home to me on the fire prevention is, you know, we recently had a, you know, a double fatality fire in East Ashland. And, you know, if, and I would love to see, through fire prevention and whatever else, maybe even through our community and economic development department, to go back to have a, maybe a neighborhood event in East Ashland, at the Unity Center. Maybe we can offer some of, some smoke detectors and different things like that. But, you know, fire prevention is very key and very important, as well as our seniors.
And something else that has come up with the opioid money, do drug education, too, within the fire education?
There'll be a way to do it?
Yeah.
That's not the first fire we've had on Ringo Street either. I remember working, in my years as police department, we hit through three.
Well, we'll get some immediate help from the seniors.
So, Mayor, you want to call for a vote?
Yes, we had a first and a second. We have it down, right?
Yes, we have six to the senior center, and that's this fiscal year. And we'll go ahead and fund the fire department at fifteen thousand this fiscal year, out of ARPA interest.
Okay, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, here you go.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
ARPA fund. The ARPA fund. The city received American Rescue Plan Act funds from the federal government intended to spur the recovery of the economic effects of Building Nine. The city had decided to dedicate this fund for utility fund infrastructure. But with Michelle Beach, she's invested in different CDs and stuff, and we've earned approximately a million dollars in interest. This fiscal year, we're budgeting revenues at eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and expenditures, ten point nine million. If you turn to page fourteen, there's a list of the utility projects. And you'll see the first two are Cove Landing and Summer Motion for forty-five thousand. Those are funded with interest again this year, as they were last year. And some of the other projects are the Fifty-Fifth Street Tank Rehab, four point one million. Finishing of the Roberts Bar, Roberts Drive Mechanical Bar Screen for two point five million. And some blowers and electrical generators for the wastewater treatment plant for three point seven million.
The funding of those is going to keep our ratepayers' rates down. The three point seven million that we're using of ARPA will not be halved when we actually do the wastewater treatment plant. That's three point seven million that we do not have to borrow it for the wastewater treatment plant.
That's correct.
The forty-five thousand to Cove Landing and Summer Motion, that does not include overtime for police and fire?
It does not. You all do support several in-kind contributions through sanitation, streets, police and fire work in these events, in addition to this. This is forty-five thousand that we actually write them checks with. We started last...
To the organizations.
Yeah, we started last fiscal year, we funded it out of the ARPA interest instead of the general fund money.
I noticed in the, in the bigger book, and then here, with our, these tanks that we're rehabbing, the one at Fifty-Fifth Street, and there were a couple of other ones that we were redoing and all that, with, got leaks in them. Are we kind of staying to where we can go on a maintenance program with these? It seems, it's like we're doing a couple of them all at one time.
It's, some of those tanks have not been rehabbed, or not been rehabbed in a long time.
Yeah.
I know we did Summit Tank, we did Catalyst Park Tank, and now we need Log Town and, what's that, Hidaw, and Fifty-Fifth Street. Fifty-Fifth Street is the only one that is ARPA-funded. So the others, the others would be through the regular utility budget, utility capital, whether it's supported or not. But, yeah, we are trying to spread those out, but they also just kind of pop up when they pop up, so.
Right, yeah.
We envision the foothills tank is probably going to be the next one.
Okay.
We've repaired, we've repaired at least three leaks there since, we actually repaired two leaks last week on that tank, so.
Oh, okay, well, I'm on the same subject, the, it's not on here, but the, I noticed we have it on to drain and get the sludge out of the reservoir. We did that last time by ourselves, right?
Yeah. Well, we had a lot of hauling that we had to do.
Yeah, I remember, it was crazy.
It was, we think that based on the last time that that happened, that it was very expensive. We think that this, this route that we're actually looking towards is a little bit more surgical. And we think overall, we're definitely going to spend less this time, because we're going to do, we're going to do kind of a exploratory type thing to see how much solids are actually in there. We're going to remove some, but even if it was, we're not going to remove the full amount, so to speak.
Oh, you're not going to take it all the way down?
Well, we will take it all the way down, but we're not going, we're, we are not going to take all of the sludge out.
Okay, gotcha.
And we're, and we'll get an idea. We do, we test this every year with hydrographic... And we're, and we'll get an idea. We do, we, we test this every year with a hydrographic survey, and they go in there with a boat, and they take sonar readings, basically, to measure the bottom and determine how much solids are in there. We know there's not a lot of solids in there, but one thing that we don't know is the colloidal solids, how much of it is in suspension, so if you go down so far, instead of just having clear water, you have kind of a really knackered, dirty water, so.
But all that's gonna be in, we'll do that.
All that is water.
In-house, that we'll do that ourselves?
Uh, we're looking to have a contractor to actually get in there, and one of the ways that they do it is they actually dredge it out of there, and then they treat it with, they take a remote sludge press and treat it, and press it on hand. The reason being is, the last time we did it ourselves, we had a bunch of equipment in that, in that reservoir and did a lot of, lot of concrete damage. So, overall, we think this is a much, it's gonna be much cheaper to do it this way than even with our own.
Gotcha, okay.
We purchased seventy thousand dollars worth of mulch last time we did it ourselves.
Yeah.
Mulch alone.
Wow. Okay, press on.
It's kind of one of those instances when sometimes there's a better technique out there that we're not capable of doing, and it's actually cheaper.
Understand.
I would like to see, this is shifting the subject, I would like to see us come up with a utility assistance program.
We have one in the current budget. We have just never, it was never allowed to be implemented.
Good.
So, we all, we can actually add that. We've got the benefit with ARPA money where we have, took us a while to get everything engineered. We are going to reinvest some of it at four percent, so we would probably pay for, ended up putting a hundred and twenty-five thousand in, Robin, last year.
When we did, several years ago, we did a, we had, we had done a CDBG COVID money utility assistance program, and that was highly utilized. And it was, you know, we received, I mean, we received, we were probably out of money with, you know, maybe the first two months, because there was a big need for utility assistance in our community. So, I think if we could look at a way to bring a program back like that, to help those elderly or disabled or low income in our community.
The budget now.
It's in the budget now?
Yeah, it is actually in the budget now. I made a note of it, and we will start.
Okay. If we start finding where we're losing water, maybe we can take some of the money from that.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Has been Tony's goal.
Page fifteen, Conference Center Grant Fund. City has a grant for the engineering, design, and construction for the conference center. Only the expenses paid with grant funds are accounted for in this fund. We are estimating revenues and expenditures this year of twelve point eight million dollars, and the expenses are an estimate of what we anticipate the cost to be this fiscal year.
When we actually will get the other twelve five from the state?
We received it last year around August.
So, we're saying to be thinking of.
I say we'll probably get it mid-July, because I think there was paperwork going back and forth last year. I think the auto mass, they just produced it sometime in the month of July.
It was basically, I think in the MOA, it was said, each of the next two fiscal years, we'll get that, and the interest can, I think, can be applied towards the.
I see the interest.
Yes.
Get it and grab it. Okay.
Now that we have a construction, an anticipated construction timeline, we can invest that accordingly.
Oh, got it, okay.
Page sixteen, the opioid settlement fund. Through class act and lawsuits, the city was given funds to help combat opioid dependency. We're estimating revenues and expenditures this year at four hundred and one thousand dollars. This past fiscal year, we were in the process of purchasing AEDs, putting all the buses, the fire trucks, the police cars, community rooms, one in each floor of the city building, is where we're gonna put all those.
So, do we have any money of that, any of that left?
Yes.
And is that four hundred and one thousand we have?
Yes.
Okay.
The companies have settlements. Some of them had to pay in two payments, some pay, I think, five or ten years. They're all like varying degrees of. So, this will be money around, I think it's around ten years, Andrew, or something?
Yeah, they're not specific to us. It's class-wide, so when each one is. And typically, the best source of that information, when we know, is just news articles that come out. Sometimes we find that out a little bit before, or we can hear from the attorneys that we have, just because it's, you know, instant. But we're, it's not specific to, we do have defined amounts and percentages, but when those are paid are not specific to us.
Page seventeen, the percent of eight voucher fund. This is a federal grant to help low to moderate income citizens house. Budgeted revenues and expenditures this year is four point five million dollars. Housing assistance payments are budgeted at three point nine million. Veterans Affairs supportive housing is budgeted at hundred fifty-six thousand. We currently have joint vouchers for our veterans. We are serving approximately five hundred and eight families. There have been prior issues with this program, but this past year, it has been corrected, and this fund is now not operating with a deficit.
When would the urban renewal, if we bring that board back to, to life, where, where would that operate out of?
Uh, no particular fund.
I'd say administrative expenses, it'd probably be the general fund, because our CDBG fund has, they've maxed out their operating expenses.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So.
That's what I'm saying, we're not gonna set up a fund for that, but.
No, I'm just trying to get a handle on that. I mean, because there's a lot of potential there with that board that could do some great work in the city.
Out of the five hundred and eight families, it says in Boyd County, how many of those are outside the city limits?
I do not know that statistic, but I would say it's probably half or forty, sixty. We have a lot of families in Boyd County, particularly in Westwood, so they're all over the county.
All right.
A, a lot of them that are in the city are more project-based vouchers. We have the thirty-four at Safe Harbor, and we have, is it seventy-eight or is it a?
Seventy-seven.
Yeah, to Glora.
A project-based voucher means that the voucher stays with a particular unit, as opposed to being transferred to another.
Because of this, yes, great.
I'll also point out too, maybe someone could elaborate on the veterans' affairs. That's a pretty big deal too.
We've, we've actually grown the program. We started it probably fifteen years ago, when we were over the Section Eight program, and Kristen has grown it to fifteen or twenty vouchers. I think they just got five more.
Yeah, there's up to twenty vouchers.
So, we have, we have twenty vouchers that are specifically used, and it's, it's outside the funding for the regular vouchers. We, we support twenty veterans, and they have supportive services at the VA. So, they not only have our rent voucher, they actually have counseling, job training, anything that they need through the VA, and we took five more recently from back then. They couldn't use all theirs, so we absorbed them, because we have utilized all ours. Uh, you wanna take a five-minute break for a recess before we start?
We can do that.
Okay. Plug on.
The next fund, since we have a fund balance of $251,000 here, we're either the point where we're overtaxing or we're under repairing. So Tony has asked them to evaluate the pumps and stuff to see if there's anything that we need to repair or fix. If not, our suggestion is when we do the floodwater tax rate is to lower it.
What page are you on?
What?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Yeah.
Yeah. So when will you know that?
They're doing an evaluation. We just asked them last week, so I'll give them a week or two.
Oh, okay.
We haven't got the assessments from the PVA yet. I think they weren't closing the tangible assessments till yesterday, today, the 11th.
Okay.
So, once we get the amount of assessments, we will get back in touch with them and see if there's anything that they need to do with that. On page nineteen is the utility fund. Utility fund budget is forty-seven point six million dollars. And this fund includes our biggest financial challenge in my career to date with the wastewater treatment plant. We'll know July eleventh. On what the cost will be for construction of the plant.
If you call it sick, we'll know.
They've already made my heart flutter with seventy to hundred million dollar range, but we have a forty-four million dollar KIA. We have the CSO funds that we planned way back when. We didn't make this decision lightly. We've been planning and working on this for several years. So, we will know tenth what we are going to do with it. We'll probably have to borrow more funds to do it. It's just how much. We've anticipated this and we've planned the utility rate increases for the sewer. We've done them over, I think, we did the first period of twenty-five percent. We did it over three periods. Then we did an additional amount, and we've done it over four times. We're very conscious of the consumer having to pay the bill, and we're trying to work the rate increase to end where they can work it in their budget rather than do a wall up once we know what the construction amount is.
Director Hall and Director Atkins have both said numerous times, the interest continues to remain high from potential bidders. They've given multiple side tours. I think Jeff McFarland had indicated that too.
Given almost daily now.
I mean, there is serious and continued ongoing interest from multiple parties, which is, hopefully will provide a competitive bidding process.
How is that bidding process going to work? They're not going to come here and...
It's all done online.
Okay.
It's, there's a...
Strand is managing that kind of part. So, we'll be able to watch it, I think, in real time as they open them up if we want.
That's what I was going to get you.
And we might, we might even figure out how we can set that up with Strand, either in the conference room.
We'll have a lot to have here so that we could monitor it.
Well, the more we have, the more competitive it's going to be.
Yeah.
I mean, that's...
And we have limited our capital projects. One of the construction, one of the instructions to Mr. Greb was, and Barry was tasked when he'd come on board. There were forty-three capital projects that were open. We did this budget, and utility fund is usually more capital intensive. We did this budget with, do not add anything to it unless we have to fix it. Let's finish what we've got started and do them right and well. So that was our instruction with the capital. So, with the capital that we have, the reservoir cleaning was one of them. The only thing that we thought that, on page twenty-one, the only thing that we thought that was pertinent to do is the Logtown tank. We didn't know that, you know, after the new board heal, we wanted to make sure that we had all our tanks done. We have it at six-hundred-and-twenty thousand. The lead service line is something we've started and we're getting ready to, you know, continue and finish.
Where's the Logtown water tank?
It's East Park.
Yes.
East Park, okay.
Yes.
I had the same question.
The pump station rehab for four-hundred thousand is also in ARPA, but we got a KIA grant, so it has to be accounted for in the utility fund. Barry is working on those to get those. They've been bid. We have some, him and Andrew are working on some administrative land and stuff. We can get those started. So, the cost of those are in ARPA and here, I think.
I've got an overall question, and I, it's something that obviously we've done for years and years. As owners of the utility system, we charge the utility system for the operation of portions of, or a percentage of the portion of the operation of city.
Yes.
What are departments, is there a percentage charged against general government, I saw?
Yes, it would be legal, engineering, finance, the city manager's office. Part of your all salary is charged there. And we central garage, where they utilize the garage to fix their vehicles. I think I've covered...
HR.
HR, yeah.
HR.
HR. Any administrative type functions?
Is it all at fifty percent, or are there different percentages that are applied?
It's mostly at fifty. I think mine might be a little different where we run the bus system. Robyn's may be a little different where we account for so many funds. The majority of it is fifty percent.
Well, it's really the only way the city benefits from the ownership directly. When I say the only way, a major way that it benefits from the ownership. Is that a fair statement?
Generally, yes. I mean, I mean, all those costs that are allocated out are based on something. I mean, at some point in time, we've done time studies. It's not down to the penny, but generally, part of my salary is in the utility fund.
It should be. It should be.
And legal and hers and stuff, so, but, yes.
And I think our citizens still benefit from our ownership of it too, because if we are a private industry, we probably would not be phasing in the rate increases like we are. They would have just increased it. So, we still have control over the rates and the ability to do them in small portions rather than fifty-eight percent wallops at once. So, that is, I think that's a huge benefit, is you all have control over what our citizens pay in, in working rate increases for big projects.
Where the utility users, not just the citizens, but utility users, right.
On page twenty-two is we have the wastewater capital. The first two on there is just to kind of keep the plant, the sewer plant limping on till we get the other one built. We have twenty-five million for the wastewater treatment plant upgrades. Obviously, it's a forty-one month construction, so all that will not be spent one fiscal year. We have some safety equipment at two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand to improve the safety of our utility users. We have some sewer projects on Fifty-third and Chadwick, sixty-five thousand, and Spring Park sewer line replacement of five-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand nine forty.
Where is, where's Spring Park?
On page twenty-two.
Where's Spring Park?
It's on Twenty-Ninth Street.
Twenty-Ninth Street.
And with our ARPA funds, where we have focused on water line replacement in this year's budget on the sewer, we've actually put close to three million dollars into the repair and the construction of sewer lines. So, we're not only just focusing on water, we are heavily focusing on our sewer infrastructure. Anybody have any questions on the utility fund?
No.
Operationally, there's no changes. There's no additional positions. The rates are just the rate increases that are included. It's just CPI for the water portion of it. The next fund on page twenty-three is the Ashland bus system. The Ashland bus system is one million, six-eighty-nine, eight-twenty-two. Salary and benefits of one million, three-sixty-nine, seven-thirty-eight. Operating expenses of three-twenty, oh-eighty-four. We have grants from the FTA of four-sixty-eight, eight-oh-two, two-fifty-two, five-eighty-three. The Kentucky Department of Transportation also funds the bus system. They'll actually fund ten percent of any capital project that we have. And we had ridership of sixty-eight thousand, three-seventeen, last fiscal year. Miles driven of one-fifty-nine, nine-forty-eight. We've, it's the first half year we've actually drove out to, expanded our routes. We're running off five routes every hour to help our citizens and customers that use it. And something that we're working on is, we're working on making it more user-friendly for people.
How about our routes? Are they holding up comparably across the board, or are there any routes that need to be reconsidered and refigured or anything?
We refigured them as of July one.
Last year?
Yes, we're actually going out to Camp Landing. We're going out to the...
We twenty-four seven to camp?
No.
They stay open all the time?
It also just wasn't for the, you know, the development there with a lot of people that would work there from Ashland. We actually hit three more King's Daughters facilities on the way out there, because previously, the only facility that we had other than the one in Russell that they sent especially handicap patients to was the one in Catwixburg. If you went to the ER, they'd schedule the appointment at the Catwixburg facility. We've actually hit their, three more facilities on that Thirteenth Street out there when we expanded the route.
Actually, I'm working on a little project with the community health needs assessment that King's Daughters did. And I've approached them, and initially, they were for it, to partner with us on doing an app for, so they can track where the bus is at and the routes. I've got on our website myself to look at the routes, to figure out how I wanted to get to point A to point B, and it's difficult to figure it out. So, what she's talking about, the app, to be able to track where the bus is at and to tell you which, you know, bus to get on. But they have a problem in their community health needs assessment with access to care. And that's access to food, to, you know, shopping and all this kind of stuff, so...
Making the routes full-time actually helped a lot of our citizens, because if you were on the route that ran every other hour, and it's something that Mr. Maynard brought to us, that you, it took three hours to go to the grocery store.
Yeah, right.
So, we've made the routes every hour. Something else that we are doing is we're going to do a lot of marketing for our paratransit program.
I was about to ask, how well that was being used, and can we expand that some terms of cash benefit?
It is an amazing program. It keeps our citizens where they can be self-sustaining, still stay at home.
Right.
They can go to the grocery store on it, they can get their hair done on it, they can go to the doctor's appointments on it. For a buck fifty, they can go anywhere they want to do, and it's scheduled.
It's a very, you know, inexpensive, that side of it. Also, it's kind of in conjunction with King's Daughters as a van ministry, that they kind of do the same thing, but they go up to fifty miles, you know, to get somebody.
Legally with the FTA, we can only go, is it, I think it's a three-fourth, three-quarters of a mile outside our route.
Now, this, we're going out into the county now. This budget reflects that?
Yes, and it actually, when we expanded our routes, we also expanded our paratransit routes. Because as our routes expanded, it allowed our paratransit routes to go another quarter, three-quarters of a mile outside of those. So, it's a good function, and it's for, you know, someone that can no longer drive, or someone that cannot go to a bus stop, cannot physically go to the bus stop, can actually schedule that and go anywhere that they want. The app, we do have an initial quote on one, it's twenty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah, one of the things that I've been asking, this is along transportation, and I don't know the answer to this, why do we not have Uber or anything like that? Is there something that we do or don't?
Probably population.
Yeah.
Probably demographics, yes, Mark Fleming. I don't know that. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't actually use Uber, but...
I think it's market-driven.
Market-driven?
Yeah, there, for a while, we didn't have DoorDash or Uber Eats or any of those, and now that's pretty popular around here. So, you know, it's probably just based on whatever the market is.
If they think they can make money, they'll come.
But the app she's referring to is really neat. I mean, it is live data. So, if you're waiting at a bus stop, I mean, you can tell when the bus is going to be...
Yeah, if you go onto thebus.org, you can, you know, type in where you want to go, and it tells you what bus to get on and where to change.
We also thought, and this is an idea that Tony had, is renaming our routes, like, just make them a color. Instead of Crossdown Twenty-Ninth, you know, you take the blue bus to a certain area, or you can get on the red bus, or whatever we choose to make.
Yeah, get on, get on our website and think of where you want to go from where you're at, and see if you can figure it out.
It certainly is a challenge. I mean, we are aware, trying to make strides in.
Recreation operating fund.
Page twenty-four.
Sorry, page twenty. Council of the city's park systems. Revenues are one-point-six million. Expenses, one-point-six million. This fund also is heavily funded from the general fund. General fund is funding one-point-six, four million for this fund. Salaries are one-point-one million. Operating expenses are five-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand. This past year, we finally did get Dawson Foods up and running, but it was a cost of just over a million dollars.
Boy, does that look good.
It does. It does look good. I love seeing those TVs when I walk in my office and I see the pool there.
It's phenomenal. It's great.
And this year, we're going to start looking for some grants to fund future playground equipment for the parks.
The land water conservation, we are, we are going after that to see what we need to do, but we're also looking at applying for it in future.
Is there a way that we could, I know this has been tossed around in the past, maybe look at grant funding for a couple of different things, whether it be a small splash pad or splash pad renovation at Central Park, and/or also looking for maybe a standalone farmer's market structure?
Yes.
Yeah, down near the transportation center would be perfect.
Yes, yes.
We...
I would certainly entertain that. I know I don't get the vote, but I'm certainly in favor of something like that. I think that would be big.
We had it in the budget.
When you look at these other cities around us, their farmer's market do quick.
I mean, you could put up just posts and a roof.
Yeah, that's all you need.
That's all you need.
You look at our sister city over in Ironton, they got a steel structure, but, yeah, something like that. It could be used real well.
Maybe we ought to have somebody come up with an estimate of the cost.
The Green Canyon.
We have engineers.
Actually put up a new one, and it's, it's full on your Saturday.
And, you know, we've got, we've got great staff. We've got some folks in the park system that built the shelter houses.
For about thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, so who's to say?
Those shelter houses, you could build a big one.
For fifty, or...
For fifty, or something like that.
If you all want to proceed with that, we can add that to the budget, and we can do it with our ARPA. do it with our ARPA.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, we've all talked about it. And it covers a lot of different things that we want to help promote.
Well, the logical spot would be that parking area down around the transportation.
Correct.
Yes.
They put a huge tent.
It'd be accessible.
Yeah.
Readily accessible to folks.
They put a huge tent on one of the festivals, and I mean, it was gigantic, but of course, that cost big money to rent one of those things, but in that spot would be perfect.
And you can think year-round, too, because something, you know, when Tony and I first were put in charge of the bus system, we had all that space that we made the rental room out of. We had visions initially of a farmer's market, but there was a stupid lease thing on the deed that said we couldn't do commercial in it.
It was restricted. The deed was restricted, what we could use it for. It was kind of, we went up and looked at Capital Market in Charleston. They have a transportation center, it's a little bit bigger than ours, but they got farmer market shops in there, restaurant at the end, meat markets in the center and stuff, that kind of thing, but...
You sent me to Capital Market in Charleston, it just kind of blew me away. I mean, it was...
It's pretty shocking.
That's what we wanted to do with the depot.
Unfortunately, the...
Deed restrictions stopped us. But something we learned from the Capital Market, this is just not to sell summer produce. This is fodder shocks and mums and pumpkins in the fall.
It's seasonal.
Christmas, yes.
Sure.
So it's something that would be utilized more.
You know, deed restrictions can be released by the grantor. Why would CSX care about what we did with the property at this point?
The state of Kentucky.
Oh, state of Kentucky.
And maybe that's something we need to look at. But I'll be, but the, I mean, we've been really shocked, or I was shocked, for the last, how many ever years? That space is booked up. I mean, there is a serious need for some space. But the wedding venues down there and stuff, meeting rooms, I mean, it's constantly booked up. I'd say put it in there.
I made a note to do that. Is there any momentum on the splash pad, or?
Well, you know, years, a couple of years back, we had it in the budget, the recreation budget. And we had it, we had it budgeted for $325,000. And then come to find out, I mean, you could, you could get one for half that. It was, the actual cost was like $180,000 for a, for a great splash park.
The one thing that we have the benefit of is we can do the water ourselves.
Yeah.
But the land water conservation grants will pay for a splash pad. So if it's a $300,000 splash pad, if we are awarded, they would pay $150,000 of it. And our in-kind contributions of like water lines and stuff can be counted towards our $150,000 also.
I mean, I'm envious when I go to Ironton over there, because their farmer's market is right next to the big splash park, and, I mean, it brings a lot of people. Sean, what, what are your thoughts?
Location, I think everything's possible. I think we got, hold up a minute, if I remember correctly, if we do locations, it would be a little bit of an issue here. Make sure everybody was on the same page.
You did a study, if I recall, in fact, I still have that. There was five locations. And one of them was 22nd Street, where the dog park used to be. One of them was the Library Commons. One of them was down, close to the transportation center, or the riverfront.
On the riverfront side.
On the riverfront side. And you had them each, you know, kind of monitored.
Scored out.
What was favored.
Yeah.
According to parking and, and safety and so forth. But I'd like to pursue that, I really would.
Why don't we drag out his report and look at it and see what the options are?
I'll look at the grant period to see what the deadline is for it, and what time they actually funds money to see if it's possible.
Thank you.
Can we do Ashland subject? But, well, we're going to put the farmers market in the budget this year?
The farmer's market, we could put the ARPA fund in, yes, we will change it before we vote on it.
Does that have to be on?
Yes.
I made a note here.
Yes, okay, I just wanted to...
You know, something we'll have to think about in the future, not this budget, is we're going to have to think about the city garage. I mean, it's, it needs a lot of work up there.
Some significant work.
Whether it's a new building, or repairs, or something.
Is there any federal transportation grant dollars out there for that? For something of that nature?
We would have to hire a consultant, because we actually looked at this previously. We need to expand the city bus garage, too. And we don't have a place to fix the buses. Our garage personnel actually have to fix bigger vehicles outside, or they, they'll drive them to the bus garage now. But we don't have enough places to store our fleet. Something else that we cannot fix at the city garage is a fire truck.
Yeah, for you to get them in there.
For the federal transportation funds to use FTA funds, you, we looked at this when we had all the ARPA money, is you would have to hire a consultant to see what space is used for federal purposes versus city purposes, and then get it approved by the FTA to apply for it. We went down that road before, but then they wanted...
It's a very expensive endeavor.
Yes.
It doesn't diminish the need for that, because...
I know one time we talked about enlarging the street department down there and taking that building. The building's demolished.
The...
What building?
I was surprised, but previous...
Behind Bill Cole, that, that old brick building that was...
The moose years ago?
If I remember correctly...
Okay, I got you.
They built a building that was going to cost five or six million. So that's why it never went anywhere, because it kept getting, they wanted to put every piece of equipment inside of it.
Okay.
So the building got morphed into something we couldn't afford.
Okay. And then we also looked at a building up there next to Mill Street that was for sale at one time.
Yeah, they wanted more than...
Did they want more than...
It was worth it. That's why we build our own.
Okay. Well, that's something for the future, I guess, not on this one.
I actually made a note of this, maybe sometime in the near future, we can have another work session, maybe toss it around.
Okay. All right. Back on it, I guess, 440 Cemetery?
Page 25, Cemetery Fund. Estimated revenues are $189,887, with expenses of $227,643. That is a deficit of $37,756, but it's a big savings from last year, which had a deficit of $306,000. And that basically has to do with restructuring personnel there and with having the prisoners mow the grass there, and that helped out a lot.
Twenty-two burials is not a whole lot of burials in a, in a year. Or do, we don't do any advertising, I suppose, and...
That is on our list to do, marketing.
I mean...
We actually, we put, we did, we started that, we put it on the screen downstairs.
I think that we could increase our revenue.
Yes.
If we took a little more proactive effort.
I'm 100% in agreement.
Yeah, I mean, we can't just sit and...
Let people come to us?
Yeah, let people come to us. We've got to reach out. And we, we had, we used to have spring sales, you know, and different things. And there are a lot of ways to, to make that a more profitable, more a profitable operation.
I certainly agree. The cemetery is very nice, it's very well maintained. It can, I hate to say it like this, but it can certainly compete with other cemeteries that people are looking.
Of course.
We've even thought the idea of maybe, if you live inside the city, you get a little bit off, or if you can pre-plan or whatever.
Well, it's a historical cemetery in the area, sure.
I mean, but no, we do plan on trying to market that, and the Ashland Bus System and several other services.
There's actually sections that could be open there in the cemetery. There's, there's undeveloped land there in the cemetery.
Well, the grass is up there. There's a lot of ownership of property out there.
Could we do seasonal people to cut grass there?
That's what he did.
Well, he's got the, I'm thinking about grass everywhere else, too.
Yes, Tony has instructed both the street department and the parks department through Sean to get any amount of seasonal that you want to clean at the city. That's our goal, is to spruce it up, cut these weeds and make Ashland better.
Yeah, the guys that I saw out on the weekend, I mean, they had a stack like that to try to go cut, you know, and, and I'm sure at time and a half, or whatever...
Oh, you're referring to like weedy lawts and code stuff?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I think you signed a lot of seasonal P A Rs yesterday.
Oh, I did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I am.
All right.
Parking garage on page 26. Our parking garage, we have fees appropriated of $12,025. Expenses of $134,335. It has a negative fund balance of $350,000, so we've lost $350,000 to date. Revenue is inefficient to meet expenses of $122,310. As we mentioned earlier, we trimmed down to one employee here through attrition, so we've even saved $67,000 from where we were last year. We need to get a plan to get this back open and start charging fees.
And this is one of the areas we also plan on trying to market, whether it'll help or not, and we're certainly going to try.
Are we required to leave those lights on 24/7?
I don't know that we're required, but security...
Well, you get into safety issue if you turn the lights off, and people can, and you got with, you know, no way, better way to say it. We experienced the property over across from the library.
Yeah.
And with the lights off, you could invite people to...
Right.
Stay there.
What's the status of that?
Good question.
You're talking about a park play?
There he is, he's back in the back.
Park play?
Park play.
Status?
We're still in, we can communicate with the property owner who lives in California. They are working with a realtor to try to package it for an auction. It would be a no-reserve auction that's coming up here pretty soon. I'm trying to figure it out.
I think they cut holes in the fence about every day.
Do they?
So is it, is it for sale, or?
Yes.
Okay.
It is, but I think there's really no interest in party at this point, and that's why it's going to go to, to a no-reserve auction.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
The next fund on page 28 is the Paramount Art Center Fund. We have miscellaneous revenues of, oh, that's zero until we open it. Sorry.
Oh, your phone.
Paramount Art Center Fund, we have miscellaneous revenues of $12,000, that's their monthly rent. And we have expenses of $15,183, which is insurance. I think we're responsible just for the insurance. And like an audit fee up there. The deficit of $3,183. The last fund is the Capital Purchase Improvement Fund. We have a total of $1.2 million. We do not have a lot of capital, other than like motor vehicle and stuff capital, because we're wanting to finish our other projects, so we did, we told staff unless it's something that really needed to be done. We have some police cars and some vehicles and different equipment from the fire. And the fire has applied for grants for everything that they have. So grant income, if we're, be lucky enough to be awarded this, would be $917,000 of the $1.276 million. The next page gives you a detail of all items on there. And that concludes the overview of the budget, unless you all have any questions?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the, the capital purchase and the more detailed side of it. Chief, I guess all our tasers are becoming out of date, is that why we're replacing them?
Yeah, we're at a point where it's unsupported through Axon. And we, it basically reached the end of any replacement parts or service from them. So we've made those things last about as long as we could, and now's, now's the time we have to make that change. With that comes an opportunity within the program. It's now offering some virtual reality training, through response resistance and scenarios.
Oh, okay.
Have access to, have access to on that. So it's kind of a win situation of, you know, upgrading what we need to, but it's going to give us more training.
Okay. I guess with the John Deere Gators that we're purchasing with the snowplows, that's because the special, unique downtown that we have?
Yes.
It's part of it.
Oh, yeah.
That's part of it, absolutely.
Yeah.
Not to mention your maintenance in downtown, the design, you've got to take control of it, not too much, too, so.
Gotcha, okay.
What's our current employee number?
Three-ten. Three-ten. That does not include seasonals, because we have a variety of seasonals.
Three-ten full-time?
Yes.
That's down from...
Three-twenty-three? Three-twenty?
So on that point, in the very beginning...
It's a good trend.
On that point, in the very beginning of our budget book, we had proposed a 2.9% COLA. And I want to thank our finance department for reviewing these COLA adjustments for our employees. While we engage in this discussion, we also must be very cognizant that it'll, that we are currently still on an active line of credit to pay our bills. In considering the best approach to employee adjustments, I feel strongly about implementing a flat rate adjustment of 75 cents across the board, rather than the proposed 2.9%. This decision is rooted in a desire to promote equity and simplicity within our diverse workforce. Based on my rough estimates, a flat rate adjustment of 75 cents would be less of a burden on the budget than the proposed 2.9%. With 145 employees earning below $60,000 annually, including a significant portion of these employees at a lower-end scale of making less than, with the lower end making less than $40,000, a flat rate increase ensures that all employees, especially those in lower salary brackets, feel a tangible benefit from this adjustment. The flat rate increase of 75 cents provides a more significant impact for those employees compared to the 2.9% COLA that, and the increase that would be felt by the higher-end employees. This adjustment will help alleviate some financial pressures and demonstrate that our commitment is to supporting our employees' well-being. If we decide to go with the 2.9% adjustment, the 147 employees earning over $60,000 a year would receive a larger absolute benefit due to the current size of their salaries. But the 2.9% increase, while the 2.9% increase may seem appealing, it would disproportionately favor higher earners, potentially widening the gap between salary brackets and creating perceptions of inequality within the workforce. By choosing a flat rate increase, we will foster a sense of unity and fairness among our team, reinforcing the idea of every employee's contribution is valued equally, regardless of their current role or current salary. This approach not only simplifies the communication of the adjustment, but it also aligns with our goal of creating a supportive and inclusive workplace culture. Having spent nine years working for the city and receiving percentage, percentage adjustments, I've always personally felt that they were not fair. I felt that, I felt this way because the tiered adjustments for the higher employees always seemed to be double or triple of what I would receive. Don't get me wrong, the employees earning higher salaries may have greater management responsibilities, but ultimately, the city is run by the employees who have boots on the ground, putting in 40 hours a week in all-weather conditions while providing high-quality customer service to our citizens. I asked my fellow commissioners and the mayor to consider this flat rate adjustment instead of the 2.9% to put everyone on an even playing field. I've heard concerns from both sides, and I ultimately believe that the flat rate is fair to all, not just the high-end earning employees. With that, I'd like to open it up for conversation and discussion.
Well, I think you all, Michelle and Tony, I think already know, I agree.
Well, I think you all, Michelle and Tony, I think already know, I agree wholeheartedly with DJ on this. You've got a guy make a hundred or, or a female make a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. On a two point nine percent raise, they're going to get thirty-six hundred bucks. While the lower-end employees making forty-one thousand gets around eleven hundred, twelve hundred dollars. And, and I just hate to see the, the gap between the highest and the lowest keep getting wider and wider. I, I really do, and I agree that a seventy-five percent, seventy-five cent raise, if and only if we can afford it, because we are on a line of credit, you know, I mean, we're, we're borrowing money to make payroll now, so we're going to give raises. So, but if, if finance and Mr. Grub can assure us that there is light at the end of the tunnel, I have no problem with giving a raise or COLA or whatever you want to call it. But I agree with a seventy-five cent instead of a two point nine percent.
When we, something we usually change our salary scale for is, and, and Tony actually pulled it off yesterday's agenda to you all. Got to discuss this, is we put the two point nine percent on there because it's an inflationary factor that basically keeps the employees' buying power the same. So if we do this and then we put the two point nine percent on there in the inflationary scale, it also is very pertinent to keeping our comp study that we just paid for relevant. Because when they did it, it's inflation that has occurred since they've done it. So to keep it relevant, we've always done the inflationary factor every year on the bottom and top of the scale. So if you have a new employee in that realm, they will get more than seventy-five cent. Some of them might get the two point nine plus the seventy-five cents. I've not looked, I've not looked at that.
Yeah.
But the, their buying power is probably actually going to increase where someone on the upper end of the scale or the middle of the scales will actually decrease. It keeps the employees' buying power the same. It is not actually a pay raise, it's just keeping their salary consistent with inflation and keeping it relevant with the study. When we did the comp study, they actually went out there and they looked at every employee's position, be it a sanitation worker, be it a, you know, someone that drives a fire truck, or someone that works in finance, or someone that drives a bus. And they compared these salaries to different.
How long ago was that?
It's, it's a, two years, three years?
Oh, okay. Irrelevant.
Two years ago.
Yes. And with that study, you had some positions that got a twenty percent increase, some that got a five. So this study that we paid Baker Tilly for went out and put the employee in the appropriate range of salary that applies to their job. They looked at their job description, what they did, and compared it to the same person doing the job in other areas.
So what, would this, this idea, would that would go against that or change that?
I think it would change that because if we want to keep the job salary relevant to the job, we need to keep our compensation studies, make sure we do them every five years. All this, the two point nine percent that we suggested is an inflationary increase that keeps the employees' buying power the same until we do a new study.
Well, the good news is, if you look at our current pay scale, we have, we're paying our employees.
All employees are paid very well.
I think at, at a nice, solid rate compared to the market. And I for one want to do everything we can for our employees, whatever approach we take. But I totally support the position of the city manager and finance that whatever adjustment would be made, would be made after we get the credit, line of credit eliminated.
That's gotta be the trigger.
Our first obligation is to our citizens. And we've, we've been on a spending spree at the city for a good period of time, and we need to put on the brakes. And I'm not, I'm not saying that employees ought to suffer in any way from that approach, but I do believe we need to be responsible stewards who are elected to kind of get control of the reins of this place and see if we can't do a little better.
And I agree with that, and, and the proposed raise would take effect, or COLA currently would take effect, I believe, in January.
That's what they're proposing.
If we're off.
If we're off the line of credit.
If we're funny.
I would like to change that from the two point nine percent to seventy-five cents because I think that would even be lesser of a burden than the two point nine across the board.
I hear you, and I think that's a very legitimate point to make.
And to be honest with you, and no, no disrespect, somebody who makes a hundred thousand dollars a year, hell, their buying power is already going to be better than somebody making fifty thousand dollars a year if they get a three point seven or, or, or two point nine or whatever.
If I could make a suggestion on this, I mean, really, this is my understanding, city managers, for budgetary purposes, what, what you suggested, the two point nine. And I don't know what the difference in the budgetary impact would be by the seventy-five cents. But keeping with the theme, you know, we might be talking about something that may or may not happen. Hopefully by December or January, we might know if that's going to happen or likely to happen. It may be something that would be more appropriate to bring up then at that time for us to have this discussion.
I think it's incentive to get there.
Well, and, and what I'm saying is that this, the two point nine is just for budgetary purposes, and I don't know what that is, but that doesn't mean it couldn't be impacted or changed by ordinance.
When it's implemented, yeah. I mean, the two point nine, if it's budgeted, could be implemented in a different fashion.
Citywide is three hundred and ninety-two thousand, and, and that does probably include benefits, personal costs.
It's two point nine is?
Yes, and that's for having a, yes.
Retirement and bike insurance.
On, on page one, we actually put a cost.
I like the idea, we can revisit this when the appropriate time.
And, and I am open minded.
We're not doing nothing.
I'm open minded on that approach, but I think, I think it's a decision to be made down the road when we can see the end of the tunnel of the line of credit.
Yeah, I, my only concern is when you, when you look at the pay scale and you see employees in departments starting out, you know, thirty-five, forty thousand, and then their director's making a hundred thousand dollars more than them.
I got you.
Uh, you know, to me, that's significant. Now granted, some of these directors have been here a long time and have gotten the money through raises that they've earned over here.
And some have specific skills that call for a higher pay scale.
Correct, correct.
Oh, I, I, I hear you. Uh, we also talked a little bit about the idea of giving relief to our community and, and, and some of the taxes that are being paid. I know all of us have received complaints about the insurance tax particularly being somewhat of an unfair tax when, when folks are paying a property tax and then they get hit with another tax on their home, on the, on the property and casualty tax that they have to, or insurance that had, that they have to pay. And we talked about looking at the types of insurance that we might be able to make an adjustment to.
I, I think, it, it's my understanding, or it was several years ago, that the state allows us to apply different rates to different lines. And I've always thought that perhaps where King's Otters is a major employer here, that we can look at errors and omissions insurance or medical insurance that these doctors pay. Some of it is, is pretty heavy. Several years ago, when Belfont Hospital was open, I had a surgeon contact me, and he wanted to move his practice here. And he thought that, he thought he would have a better client base here. He thought ultimately he can make more money until someone told him about their insurance premium tax.
Professional insurances that would.
He did some quick math in his head and said, I just don't see how I can make it work because I'm, I'm going to be paying that much more in terms of what I would gain. So I think, I, I think that's worth looking at, and, you know.
I'm concerned about the doctors, but I'm a lot more concerned with the elderly citizens.
Of course.
That are stretched on their, on their dollars.
And I only say that in the context.
No, I, I'm not being critical, I'm just saying what, what the main concern I have.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know if it would or not, hopefully, but it would garner a little bit more support. I mean, King's Otters, if you look at the payroll tax, they're, they're paying about forty-something percent of it, so.
Along those lines, Tony, do, do we have any idea how many jobs are moving to Belfont?
Uh, I don't, but I think we are going to end up, obviously, with the addition of the new ER.
That'll balance with someone.
We are going to net a little bit more. We've not budgeted for that in here because we're really not certain, but it may be a good time, or do we have, it's in March of each year that you can adjust the insurance.
I spoke with Ms. Marx, and, and she assured me that that was not going to happen yet.
What's that?
The movement of administration was not happening.
No, I'm just saying that we are anticipating, I'm hopeful that there'll be an increase in employees.
With the emergency ER.
And we don't really budget that in, so we're not dependent on it. So maybe the first of the year, because I think with the state at the insurance, you have to file that by March. So March of next year would be a good time. And it'll also give us time to see if we're going to get an increase, a bump up in the payroll tax.
Got you.
Uh, so maybe we can look at these COLAs and that at the same time.
And, and.
Yeah, good idea.
Hope I answered your question.
And another way that we'd like, and you could directly impact just elderly and disabled citizens because you all have a different garbage rate for elderly and disabled.
You raised that before, I think that's an excellent idea.
My goal is.
You can't do the, you can't do the water and sewer rate, but you could, you could make an adjustment on the garbage.
It gives them an actual discount on the first thousand gallons of water also. But I think we've left a lot on the table, and we're calling them commercial buildings. But there could be a duplex that they're calling commercial buildings. And they're, they have the ability to go outside of Ashland.
Whoever.
Seek garbage, where our residents that are living in a single-family home are paying Ashland to do their garbage.
Right.
So I think that's a revenue source we're leaving on the table, and it's a parity thing.
Well, there's, even the revenue, some of the stuff that we're missing out on, you know, I guess our ordinances, we pick up our cans as Ashland on it. Well, they can go out and purchase these other cans, and we're not, some of them we're not charging on. I mean, they can go to Lowe's and buy one, a green one, and.
Is the commercial garbage something that you all as a group would be wanting to look into?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, I'd like to see that, and even the addition of, even the addition of some more dumpsters. I mean, I know dumpsters are, at one time, they had several months waiting lists for dumpsters. And that's a moneymaker, or sanitation is a moneymaker, and it funds other accounts throughout the city, so.
It, but I would say this before I retire, it is my goal to work out some way that we have some kind of tax reduction or, or something before.
But our recycling that we have going on there, I mean, have we looked at that lately, at the cost and?
That's something that, you know, when we, we talked, actually, this conversation Tony and I had, and DJ just brought up also.
Just last night we were talking about.
Yeah, they, there's twenty cans down there.
Yeah, I, I, I never figured that out. Why don't we get rid of all those cans that aren't being used? We use about maybe five cans at best.
I don't, I don't know where the location would be, but I mean, personally, I come across the bridge and you're seeing that down there, that's just.
Think there's, well, you know, it, it's not an residential exposed neighborhood. I mean, that's, it's, it's hard to come up with a spot that's not going to fringe on somebody.
It would be better to have smaller ones at different locations throughout the city to where.
Or even.
Maybe so.
Or even schedule once every two weeks to go to people's houses and pick it up.
That, that we.
Uh, that's, that's.
I think our last study might have been cost-heavy.
I think the curb, the curb pickup is what, where the expense is.
Yes.
Yeah, you had to have so many, so many customers.
Probably another.
Trying to be cost-effective for the company. And we had, the last study, we only had three hundred and twenty-five people that were.
That wanted to have it.
That wanted to have curbside recycling.
I wasn't thinking the company, I was thinking our people. Do it.
Okay.
And then the company can pick it up.
I tell you, our, our folks provide awfully good services, it is.
They are.
To stretch them more.
No, no, I, you would obviously have to hire a, a person to do that or work it out.
We don't have a better department in the city than sanitation.
No, we're very blessed.
What does that cost us a year to do that?
Twenty-three thousand for the cans.
For the recycling?
Recycling down there.
And plus the attendant.
Plus the employee, yeah.
I was surprised that we just got around to putting in a porta potty down there. I don't know what the guys been doing all this time.
It's called recycling, composting.
That's what that sixth dumpster is used for.
But you know, I went around the state, Winchester has a similar thing that we do. It's a fenced-in area, and people come there weekly. I, I saw them go in, they have an attendant and so forth. But that, that seemed to be the, the fix at the time because, you know, we were having people dump couches and, and.
I would have.
Over at A C T C and Old Orchard Parkway.
You don't have an attendant there, you're in trouble.
If you don't have somebody watching it, it's just, it turns you to a.
That's the problem with the remote ones.
Yes, it is.
You wouldn't have a, an attendant at every one of them.
Well, that's about all we have, I mean, unless you all have.
Well, do we, do we need to vote on this in order to get it?
I think, I think that would like to.
Yes, we have, Susan has.
If we don't vote now, we'll just, it'll be two more meetings or three.
Right.
Susan has an adjusted ordinance where we have added the utility assistance program, and we've added money to do a farmer's market building to the ARPA fund.
That's the only number that's changed, is the ARPA fund.
You can provide us a copy as long as you, the first reading has it in it.
Yeah.
I'm good, counselor.
All right. Let's move to move business.
New business. First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, Approving and Adopting the Twenty Twenty-Five, Twenty Twenty-Six Budget and Appropriating Revenues on Hand and to be Received During the Year of Twenty Twenty-Five to Twenty Twenty-Six for the Payment of Expenses of the City of Ashland for the Twelve-Month Period Beginning July One, Twenty Twenty-Five and Ending June Thirty, Twenty Twenty-Six, and Repealing All Ordinances and Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Herewith.
So moved. Second, any more discussion?
Yeah, I would like to thank the city manager for the leadership he's provided in putting this together and the finance department, Robin and Michelle and all the folks that worked with him, the department heads for their contribution. This is a major, major deal, and you, you've done an outstanding job putting it together.
Yes.
Thank you all.
We really, really appreciate what you're doing.
Well said. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, very good.
You want to go through the rest of it?
Yes, sir. Item B.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, Fixing the Regulatory License Fee at Four Percent of the Gross Receipts from the Sale of Alcoholic Beverages Within Said City During the Fiscal Year July One, Twenty Twenty-Five Through June Thirty, Twenty Twenty-Six, as authorized and imposed by Section Twenty-Four of Ordinance Number Eight, Series of Twenty Twenty-One, known and cited as the Alcoholic Beverage Control Ordinance for the City of Ashland, and such proceeds to be used to reimburse the city for expenses related to the sale of alcoholic beverages therein.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Are we still doing, it's, are the folks that are affected, the departments doing budgets to support the number that we've, we've?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item C.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, Fixing the Tax Levy for the Year Twenty Twenty-Five Payable in the Year Twenty Twenty-Six on the Bank Deposits Franchise Tax for Revenue Purchases, Purposes by the City of Ashland.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item D.
Reading and Adoption of a Resolution Entitled, A Resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, Authorizing, Authorizing a Two Point Nine Percent Increase for All Members of the Policemen's and Firefighters Pension Fund to Be Paid From the General Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Second. If we do that 2.9%, is that going to?
This is police and fire.
It's just a COLA, it's just a COLA to the police and fire retirement fund. What do we have, 11?
These people certainly need the 2.9.
We're down to seven.
We're down to seven now, I think.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item E.
Reading and adoption of a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing a 2.9% Increase for All Members of the Utility Pension Fund to Be Paid from the Utility Fund."
So move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item F.
Reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Accept a Donation of $1,000 from the Loyal Order of the Moose, Number 892, on behalf of the City of Ashland Fire and Police Departments."
So move to the second.
Discussion? Well, we want to thank them.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I guess we want to go into executive session.
Yes, please. To discuss property acquisitions, yes?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?